I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I were at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do our windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINYS. Just call. Thank you.
So I'd be about a month ahead of schedule. Mike and I could probably, we had to positively probably create one as far as FY '19, as soon as next week, probably. We want to be careful about some of the expectations that we're going to make. So that being said, we will be presenting an FY '19 budget with our recommendations. We'll have the requests that are made by the various departments. I've met with a couple of us. We'll be meeting with them in the immediate future. And we will have a plan as to what we propose as far as funding sources and any of the options that the town might have going into FY '19. And we're going to try to pare it down as much as we can, but I haven't too much of a burden on the tax partners in town. But the fact is that Associate Town Attorney and School Department as well has really been operating with tight budgets, you know, for the last 18 years or so. That's what our game plan is, that budget can be given to the advisory and the school committee and the board of selectmen right after the holidays.
Just one thing. One of the things that we've asked of Mr. Corn is that when he was scheduling meetings with some of the department heads, that he could let advisory know, and we would see if we could have somebody sit in with the meeting just so that we'd get the detail of what the departments are hoping for as we go through this process. We're trying to streamline it before the departments as well as us, and we're all trying to stay informed. So if you can run your meeting on who's personal.
I just wanted to reiterate to the board what we've been saying all along. There's really a lot of stuff we have in front of us that we can't. You can say what this is. We're willing to tune out, see if we can be able to do that this year, just based on the trends and based on what the council has submitted to us. Not only to have a prospect of an operational, a drive for the budget, but we also, well, actually not a budget, but a budget that will also require us to make some hard decisions outside of two now. Police stations, fire stations, TBW facilities, communities. There's a lot of things that could be on the table between May, it's going to come upon us much quicker than we think. We're going to work. A lot of things are going to happen very quickly, and it's going to take some big thinking in what it's successful to put that together in mind and in thought logically. It's going to take a lot of work, I mean, actually, we need to set up a budget, but also the board of selectmen, the school committee, and the budget to focus on the problem.
Need to hear those on this discussion?
Need to vote to open the annual town meeting warrant on January 22nd, 2018, for the close of February 9th.
Bill, before we move on, I did have a question. So we have all these folks from various departments in town. Is there further discussion to be had?
There's somebody, I think we may have, I think it might be somebody.
No, no, those folks are here too. I just want to put a call out. We're all here in one room. There's going to be plenty of discussion going forward, obviously. We have a capital funding subcommittee, committee, starting up right after the holidays. We have all you folks in the room. And I'd just like to get, if you don't have anything to say here tonight, that's fine. But I would like to get a sense of the different departments, how you feel working with Ed and Mike and advisory to a lesser extent. Is that process working for you? Money might not be there at all times, but is that process working for the school department, for all the departments? I just wanted to make sure we took advantage of, you know, there's a lot of talent in this room. I just want to reach out to you folks.
So I'll just say, I'm glad for your case.
Excuse me, can you come up to the microphone, please? Does that sound good?
Is that a very helpful vote? I'm Patrick Chalk, I'm the chair of the school committee and report to Supreme.
Don't we all?
Really? Just to answer your question, man, it's been, you know, we really valued, I think, the relationship over many years. So I think, you know, the fact that Aaron and Ed talk pretty frequently, and Aaron and Mike talk pretty frequently, lines of communication with you guys, well, has been very open. And we're really fortunate, I think, in Pembroke, to have that kind of partnership and that kind of relationship. And I think the benefit of that is even greater when we're going into times that may not be as fruitful as they've been. So yeah, to answer your question, I think that's what I've been doing.
Great. That's, that was my sense, and I just wanted to reach out to you folks. Thank you.
Any others? Yes.
Okay. We need a motion to vote to open the annual town meeting warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I would vote to open the annual town meeting warrant on January 22nd, 2018, and to close it on February 9th, 2018.
Second. Any other discussion? Any votes in favor? Vote to accept the resignation of Tim Brenner from the advisory committee?
Mr. Tim, I would need, definitely accept with regret the resignation of Tim Brenner from your advisory. He's one of the really in tune members of the advisory committee. He watched the money like it was his, and I think that's what we can ask of the advisory committee.
Second. Just to let you folks know, Tim will still be a valuable member of the committee, serving in other committees. There's only so much, some of the young family can do at one time.
Having heard that, you realize we are now down to three members. We are going to discuss tonight the fact that we would probably put an article in the warrant to be able to change the composition of the committee such that the quorum is based on the members that are appointed, not necessarily what is the maximum number. Because we've had to cancel meetings because we can't get quorum. Everybody is busy, I understand that. So not everybody can make it. But I think it's important enough that we are able to do town business, that we have to make this composition of the committee work the best we can. And I would hope that this might get people to come out of the woodwork. I just saw somewhere where we have 12,006, some hundred and some registered voters. That's an awful lot to try to get two or three people to be part of the committee. So I would like to hope that we can find somebody.
Need to vote to adopt a selectman 2018 calendar?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board consider the adoption of the 2018 proposed selectmen's calendar as presented to us.
Second. Any questions or comments? I'm very opposed. Serena, would you be posting that on the website?
Yes, sir.
Vote to accept the minutes of December 11th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board accept the minutes of the selectmen's meeting on December 11th, 2017.
Second. Any votes in favor? Anybody opposed? I said, election itself is, continue discussion of early non-medicare eligible retired re-sold to term contribution rates, and I'm going to recede myself. That's going to take over considering a retiree. So come back when you're done.
Thank you, Bill. So this is a continued discussion, discussion we had with the retirees a couple weeks ago. We've all got a chance to look at each other a little more.
Go back. Probably till last week, there was a lot of discussion about how many people wanted this, how many people weren't. So we even knew the numbers, we're guessing 20 people. 16 in range, 16 in range, 64, 57. And they'll reach out as they reach, hit 65. Two of them, one of them is 65, one of them is 83. And neither of them owe the capital or the dollars to pay the bills, so they would have to spend the rest of their individual pay. The other two, one is 56, one is 51, disability pensions. If allowed to stand the way it is now, they pay $3,804 for their health insurance. If allowed to stand, they will eventually be paying $6,351 for the health insurance. Mr. Corn just mentioned, but last week he did say something to me about the disability pensions and asked how it is fair that someone at 65 go out and choose a 62% pension and have to pay taxes on it, where the two people who are on disability pensions don't have to pay taxes on it. Those individuals, because they are, you know, as I said, the individuals do pay taxes on their pension, the same taxes every other four days, important kids on their pension. Now, the reason that these people are here is because this, most of them is because they saw the meeting last week, and now they fully understand the impact of what this move does. They too were all represented in the meeting of 2012. Only each one of us said we would give an extra pay to cover insurance to teachings that are protected. And if you understand now that we should have been invited to some meetings we wouldn't have been invited to, which I guess last week should be invited to negotiations, no. Now I'm told we should have been. There's a health insurance meeting coming up Wednesday afternoon. Judge isn't required to be there, I wasn't even invited to. But they're not favored by the commission to stick on.
Certainly. Please come on. My best recollection, when we were discussing all this health insurance, and I may have been somewhat vocal in that, was that we were going to take care of our retired people. They were on a fixed income. They have no way of making up the difference because they no longer work. And it's kind of unfair at this point if we want to change that. You know, you want to take care of the people that can negotiate and figure out how to make it work, that's great. But the people that have already retired based on those figures, don't get a chance to re-figure. They're already out there. So that was my recollection of 2012. I know there was a lot of give and take on both sides. The town had to do what it had to do to pay the bills and to keep the insurance. But when we're talking to 20 people that have already retired, if you don't have a second opportunity to go back and re-figure at the time, that's life piece.
Anybody else?
I have one thing. One of the people that we've been discussing earlier, and I'm not going to mention names, his pension is $26,400. After taxes, that leaves him approximately, total taxes, $20,000. If you assume on the home, $3,000 in real estate taxes, which is modest, right? That leaves him $17,000. So if this goes through, and he has to pay $6,000, he's going to be living on $11,000 a year. Probably the reason why he says it was. I hope that if he do this, the town is going to be saving hundreds of thousands of dollars because of hardship this night.
At the beginning, I understood health insurance, I understand health insurance, I understand going on a path. Many of these employees, I'm not talking about all of them, but many of these employees would be better off, almost. One of them left here three years ago. Health insurance is going to break him, he'd be better off on welfare. I know two families have been approached, and they've been told, "Why don't you just stop working? We go on Mass Health." And their answer is, "We don't go on Mass Health. We don't collect food stamps, we get nothing." That's not how I want to live. I don't go on Mass Health. But to have employees that work for you for hundreds of years, to find out that even three years later, they'd be better off on welfare, that's just, it's not how you want to end this. It's just not how you want it, country. Some coming across the border makes me nervous. It's just, and I think, I know you guys should give it, those guys, that's it, I'm done. Take that for it, I'm done. And now, to be that so sad, we're taking that, we're taking that, it's not really bad. And if there's, there's things that come up with the senior health insurance plans that should have been bad, and Judge arrived, called to come back, and if you can't close the contract and say, "Well, they should shut up to bother." And I just hope we do, I wouldn't have had authority to say, it seems like I said, I don't understand, not talking about 20, not talking about another list of 244 people, 20 people for this health program. And every one of them, for one year is working in this town, to be told, you know, you'd be better off on Mass Health, which means you go on, you should. They go on Mass Health, they need to come and go on Mass Health because their money, money lets them get on to Mass Health. But if somebody, a husband or wife gets up another side job, Mass Health closes off, they can come back on health insurance. That's the choices these people make. And you shouldn't work for a town all these years, and then turn up.
Thank you.
Or even having, even having, even having to be in a position where you have to go and apply for a hardship. Go in and sit down with someone at the town and show them, every bit of your finances and apply for a hardship. That's, that's embarrassing. That's humiliating, to have to sit in front of somebody applying for a hardship. I just don't think that's exciting to everyone. Come in and show everybody how much money you're doing. But that's not how it works.
So, the intent of, the intent of the board of selectmen was to make every, every one, every department, every group, 25%, to make it even across the board. The school department's been there for years and years now. And it's, it was a goal. Other towns are 50%. So we want, we needed to, we needed everyone to be at least at 25% for, for town's finances and as a matter of fairness across the board. Black and white. But life isn't always black and white. If it was, hey, there'd be computers up here. We have to make, we have to make tired decisions that are, that benefit all 20,000 residents. But we also don't want to make people lose their houses or go broke, especially a small group of 20 people. So I tried to come up with a compromise, a thought on how we can accomplish, not just our, not just our goal, it's a town's goal really, to, to fund, fund the healthcare. So the 25% is an important goal for us. So the compromise to people who are in a hardship would be just like an abatement on your real estate taxes, if that's the process I was thinking. So we've looked into it, and town council finds that that's in violation of Mass State law. We, you can't segregate members of a group. You can segregate the pensioners from everyone else because you're a group, but I can't segregate people within that group. So, you know, you might thought it was embarrassing, but it's no more embarrassing than someone getting a tax abatement. That was my thought. We could disagree on that, but we can't use that anyhow. So I think this board, really, and I'll reach out to Ed before we take any action, but I think where we stand now is we have to make, we have to make a choice. Either everybody's at 25%, come hell or high water, or we make an exception for the entire pensioner group. And that's where we are. And I'd like to reach out to Ed to expand on that and fill in any blanks.
Okay. The group of people we're talking about right now are what are known as early retirees. These are people that have left the service of the town willingly or unwillingly, but are not 65 years of age and therefore qualified for Medicare. So they're on the town's health insurance plan until they reach 65, whether they're individual or family. And so that's who we are identifying. And now, last week, the conversation was regarding hardship cases. We've been told by town council that if the town wishes to examine hardship cases, we would need a special act of the legislature. That we just can't do that on our own. We can't treat certain retirees different than other retirees because it's all in one unit. And thirdly, in your packet, you have the memorandum from town council that said that under Mass General Law, Chapter 32B, you have to treat everybody in the same unit excluding people in a union. They're separate. But if you're in the same non-union unit, you have to treat all those retirees the same. So one of two things happen. Either you charge everybody 25%, or you bring everybody down to 15%. And that's the choice. And if you bring every retiree down to 15%, it costs the town about $100,000 a year. So we would have to increase the town's budget by $100,000 a year to bring everybody down to 15. So it's either bring everybody down to 15, or bring everybody up to 25. And the plan that was before the board was that we would get all retirees up to 25% in three years.
So those folks that retired early are still within the all-retirees group?
Correct.
So even the folks that retire years and years from now?
They're not in the group yet, so it's down. Yeah, I mean, anybody over 65 is paying 25%. Correct.
Hey, the early retirees in the same track to get up to 25% as all the other retirees?
They are now. It was what was proposed by the staff last summer when we proposed these current retirees that were paying 15, go to 19.
Did that get altered? Did they miss that scenario?
Only, like I said, you get one or two things. You do, you're all at 25, or you're all at 15. But you're all going to be at the same rate. Mr. Chairman, after hearing the town administrator, that completely shoots down an idea that I was going to throw up. If it's either 15 or 25, that's, clarifies the situation completely. So in order to get to 25, we've arrived at a schedule, which we've always voted to do. Any, any changes in that schedule, I just don't believe it's going to pass muster from the legal definition that we received. I thought the hardship suggestion was a good one. That's not possible. So we are at the choice, 15% or 25, everybody. You can't have some at 15 and some at 25, permanently.
I have a question. We did this in 2006. It was held out probably a month and a half until we got clarification from council, finding that it was okay to do it. And at the time, town council did come back and say, "Yes, you could break these people out because they're divorced."
I don't recollect town council appointing on whether or not some members, some retirees could be at 20, 15, whatever.
But we went to them to ask them. Those are questions, it started in one meeting, and they tell that if we got that meeting and the next meeting might clarify the spousal continuation, and by the next meeting might have this.
I'm sorry, I don't recollect town council.
I believe that's the one. We didn't say we could do it. We weren't talking about, we're special members and HMOs, you could do it because it was HMOs and we had, we had way too much.
Well, we specifically asked the question, so I made sure there was no mistake. Speaking of retirees only, and we, we had the grant sweeping that's been, that last time. Yeah, we did, we talked about it so much that I don't know if that specifically pertained to what we have here, but we did ask the question to town council directly about this issue. And it came back that no, no unit can be split up percentage-wise. So we have to come up with something else, is what we really have to do. And that's, that's what we need to discuss. If we even attempted a special act of the legislature, we wouldn't have it implemented for six months on a fast buck. You know?
Anybody else want to comment on that or any?
Well, I think everyone needs to have the time to say their piece. Do you feel that we should, do you wish to reevaluate this relationship, given the way this has come to light? Would you like to?
I would, if you ask your opinion, you're like a special one more. We should have roundtable discussion in public.
Thanks, that's the next.
So you're taking that, ask Ed. Special Act of the legislature, did they tell you what that special act was and what this was combined with?
No, the town council did so fine that it would be, it would require the special act to view of a breakout consideration such as hardship or solid health. And would there have been a chance that that could make it even worse for us, that hardship would have to go to every, every group, not just retirees? Well, I think we're basically looking at early retirees, just that segment of the populace, that's all. I think opening up to active employees, that would be.
That's, that's what I want to avoid. I don't want to try to help 20 people and then open it up to everyone in the town.
Well, this is probably really better if that 20.
Another thought, the lesson of all, would be to extend this. Right now, we have a three-year, the three-year schedule to go to 25%. If we made that a five-year schedule, would that be enough for retirees? But you have to do all retirees, not just the early retirees in this case. So just, right now, I'm just trying to give a couple of scenarios of things we could do.
Well, Matt, if you start, if you start bringing in the people that are over 65, then you're talking, the number of things goes in triple figures.
And the ones over 65 are not on Medicaid? Yeah, we are. I just have a quick question here regarding the numbers. If you say that it's about 20 people affected by this, but go forward for three years, how many of those are injured to 60 pounds? So maybe it would be quite a few less than 20, effectively, they would be paying 25% of Medicare.
Yeah. There's, there's a small number of that are going to be in the early retiree category or at least more than we're all going to be around.
But in terms of the people we're talking about, early retirees. And again, I think we sent something here and you were suggesting to phase it in as well, but to start for retirees, but of course, this label means that it has the area and so forth. That's the thought. I mean, you have 20 retirees that fall into this, that have a hardship. Over the next three years, will 10 of them, the rest of them, get to the Medicare hardship? And you have a much smaller group. So I mean, the five-year thing, maybe extending it a couple more years obviously helps those that are in the, it's, it's, it's when retire, I'm retired, I retire under certain expectations and I can understand if the expectations change, what happens. I'm fortunate, my wife was eligible, the town health, so we only pay 50%. But it's still, it's still 50%. But if there's more than this, it's something that you're asking here, you know, very great that we have that subsidy, we get, you know, cataloged plan. But I also want to say that, you know, if you can go to five years, it might give that those people that extra year until they hit the Medicare, because most of them are probably between 60 and 65 now. Do we have the exact numbers of, you mentioned there was 16, 16 out of 20 people were 57 to 64?
If I may, what we're talking about, there is a group of early retirees. The youngest is 57. And we have two at 64. So next year, they're going to 25%. All right, 16 people, attrition, are going to come off this list within eight years. So what would be, if you're considering state legislation, you'd be dealing with two groups. Those that will never be eligible for Medicare. There's two of them. And presently, two people that aren't disabled. So if you were considering, those would be the two qualifications. If one qualifies, I'd be much more, state, the rest of them are going to go to 25% by law, one every 65. Nothing you can do about it. There's food to buy. So we're dealing with 16 that will go to 25% and four.
Jim, I think we'd rather extend this out. It won't be a week because of the false conclusions, but extend it out for the next meeting. Because we're in a position, just because we can do something, doesn't mean we should do it. There's a sense of fairness that I think has been talked about. And I think in two of the cases that are more isolated than the others, I think we need to, you know, pursue a home loss efficient, then that's what it's got to be. Because I can't think of putting somebody in a position that they try to live on $11,000 a year. I mean, that's, that's, that's not something, that's not a legislative crime to make. I will move to table this for a next meeting. And in the meantime, we look at the legislative ban.
All right.
Second.
The motion second, before we take that vote.
Just talking about this in advisory, like so forth, the insurance plan itself, if we get a cheaper plan for the, for a cheaper plan, that makes the premiums go down. So even though they're paying 25%, the cost will be less. So we've been kicking around GIC now for about three years. We've been talking about the plan we have now and getting rid of that. It's something we have to, I think, look at pretty serious. And I think with everybody else, we should probably do some type of analysis between what we're using now and see what works best for the town, what's best for the employees. And along with, along with a bigger plan like GIC with 200, 300,000 employees, I'm sure we're going to get a better rate than standing by ourselves with three or four of our towns. If that's the case, and we can get a better price, that would be, the premiums go down, make them happy, should make the town happy because we're paying a whole lot less hard. It's just a different spin on it.
Thank you. So we're going to have a motion in a second. I'll listen to Eric.
All right.
Go ahead as well. Hands for four. One, I'll say. The motion will be tabled until the next meeting, which is January 8th. Thank you all.
The whole business we have, you know, financial management, Mr. Stone, we talked about one of the items that were in my memorandum. Yes. Thank you.
Item number three, comprehensive review of the bylaws. In your memo, Ed, you have comments that on this one, it's to be discussed with the government study committee. Is that how you see that, Ed, seeing your on that committee?
I see that it's, it could be part of the committee's role, certainly, but comprehensive, but it is not on the agenda, nor will it be for the foreseeable future. The comprehensive study of the bylaws is a long, arduous, winding, head committee. I know, I've been on a committee on the planning board, it's just that for the planning board, these governing rules and regulations, and it is, it is a very long and difficult road. You can take off, take some weight, hang some fruit, but it really should be a committee on, of its own, looking into nothing but bylaw review. And government study, maybe at this time, just has a bigger fish to fry.
If I may, I'd like to just quickly review with the board, deciding number three, taken from the financial management review that was done in December 2013. The Department of Revenue's comments on bylaws. We recommend that the town perform a comprehensive review of its bylaws. This review should determine whether existing provisions are current, valid, and in force. Any conflicts between bylaws should be corrected. New bylaws should codify all officials, permanent committees, and boards. The bylaws should identify and describe the role and responsibilities of appointed and elected official departments and committees. The bylaws also should be organized by topic, not chronological, and include sections for special acts of the town and adoption of general enabling laws. Pretty comprehensive.
But that, but keep in mind, that's boilerplate for every town to do that. It's not, it's not like they looked at our bylaws and said, holy cow, you need to, you need to really review these and do it. That's boilerplate for every town, and it should be done as housekeeping. But it's, it's a really tough task, but if you're suggesting a committee that do be chair of, I'd be happy to make a motion for that effect.
No, I am not suggesting that. What I am suggesting is that the Department of Revenue in 2013 has identified this as a problem for the town, and we haven't done anything about it.
I'm calling it's not a problem for the town, other than boilerplate language in housekeeping.
Well, why don't we just do the housekeeping? If that's what we haven't been doing.
It needs a committee to be chaired by someone from this board to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I might add that two or three incarnations ago, there was a government study committee that looked at the town bylaws, and the first thing that they came up with was, you know what, let's go from three to five selectmen. And that was the end of the investigation into the town bylaws. Now, that was a great move. I mean, I was secretly very supportive of going to five selectmen, but that was the extent of their investigation of the town bylaws.
Yeah, if you read, if you read the town bylaws, there's a ton of them in there, that's so archaic, just from the reasons, you really need to be changed. And I don't know whether the town is up to that or not, because we bring stuff in to change or upgrade. Bylaw in front of the town people now, they actively throw it down and go on in and do it if they don't want any new rules, regulations, procedures and all that. And whoever decides to do that, I mean, people will be willing to help, but a lot of the running committees, that's, that's got to take some effort into doing that. Some of them.
Yeah. And one of the, one of the terms that they use in there is codification, and you would almost need a company that specializes in doing that with their laws. I mean, you know, we've gotten copies of, you know, bylaws to know the accounts on related subjects, and you can see that their bylaws have been codified and not just from, like ours have been going over the years, whereas we just suggest that you're not by statute matter, but by a binding date, you know, okay, this is the way that's we've done, so now it goes into this. You know, you would believe how many bylaws and the variety of statute matter that are under miscellaneous, whatever section that is, but I think it's section 20, but it's miscellaneous. And anything's in it, you know, whether, that you can't go swimming there at five o'clock at night without a bathing, you know, that, you know. I mean, there's, those kinds of things are in, you know, in their bylaws.
Probably, probably a lot of them, you can delete the language and just put in there whatever the term, general law is today, and it's passed applied by what the general law is today. Because what ends up happening is it's a $25 fine for some violation that you committed 50 years ago, and today, the state is probably a $100 violation rather than a $25 violation. So the person could be charged either way, you go through the criminal and civil law. So there is a lot of work to it, but I mean, I'd be glad to jump on a committee if there's somebody else that wanted to do it with me.
So, and just so you folks know, don't just look through like my pushback, thinking that it doesn't need to happen, that it's good, it does need to happen, and it should. But I really, I'm mad at me because I don't think you understand how arduous a task it is.
You think we had a real.
Right.
Why don't we look at a charter?
That's even more arduous.
Well, there are many towns across this Commonwealth that are organized, that go to town managers. And that information is available, job descriptions, what the charter is. I don't know why we couldn't picture line on somebody else's charter.
Look, a charter is a, is a two-year, the charter committee, charter committee is appointed, is created, and then it's a, it's a two-year commitment to get a charter for it. And, and it is not absolutely needed. The town government can run just fine with the town manager and bylaws, and a charter can come secondarily at all.
Well, I didn't write this, but on the town website, if you click on committees, it gives you a list of all the committees. And when you click on a particular committee, it tells you what it's about, who's on it, so forth and so on. Now, on the town government study committee, it said, "The ultimate goal of the town government study committee is to gain the support and confidence of the public through the creation of a new charter establishing the framework for an improved organizational structure for the town council." Like I say, I didn't write that. I don't know who wrote it. Could have been somebody's idea or what they thought was going to happen on that committee, but nevertheless, it's up there.
Yeah. It was revisited from the previous committee and that's what the decision was like.
Okay. Just, you take the temperature of the committee, the committee evolved, the committee, the current committee has turned over 100%. They're, I'm the only sitting original member, the only one. So everyone that started the committee fell off, new people came on, fell off, new people came on, and we tried. So we got a bylaw passed at the last town meeting, so we had some action. The committee this year, this coming town meeting, this town meeting warrant intends to put on a town manager article, which is going to be very consuming for data gathering, which we've been doing already, reaching out to the public and to town departments and boards. There's always so much you can ask of volunteer people to do for families and actually get something done, get movement done, which I think this committee has already, has already seen through, we can get action done here at the town meeting floor, and we have another big task ahead of us this coming, this coming year. So it's a group that's there now, that's not the group that's going to sit down with one of those green visors and roll up their sleeves and look at the town to town bylaws. That's a, that's a task that has to be done. It's not going to be that group. Another group.
Well, we've heard from advisory tonight, begging. Well, we've heard from advisory tonight, begging for members to come forward to fill their ranks, and that's, there are other committees that are in the same boat, including the government study committee. So, folks out there, anyone's watching that wants to help us not only with this project, but other projects, and the advisory board as well, please contact our office.
And one other thing is, you know, we have, we have a small committee, as they say, it's turned over multiple times, and now we have a group that have a, have a focus and a task at hand that they've been trying to accomplish, and just by what you're stating here tonight, you want us to backtrack and refocus on something because it's written on a piece of paper, and it's dangerous. It's dangerous for the ego of, of the people that serve in this committee that are, that are committed to, to an idea that's developed within the committee meetings, that, that you'll, you look at a mission statement from the website, and you wanna change the task at hand, so we have to be careful. If there's, if there's something, you're bringing it up, Luke, if there's something you want done, if you've got an itch that needs to be scratched, start a committee.
Well, I thought we had one, yeah.
It's, the mission is changed, it's, you, you, every single meeting, Luke, after every meeting, you ask me, "How's the town government study committee? You've got an itch that needs to be scratched, and if, if we're not giving you what you want, then you either have to join the committee and try to guide it toward what you want, or start a different committee." I don't, I don't understand what you're looking for, you bring it up all the time, and I keep telling you that we're working on stuff, but it's just not what you want.
No, I only, I only bring it up because you have told us that you need members, and you've had a lot of meetings that you didn't have a forum. That's a puddle, and I know you've tried to get people to join that committee, and we're just, you know, we're not getting anywhere, but if you're gonna have an article on your schedule for a town manager in the spring, that is an accomplishment, and you've already had one.
And, and you know, getting animated, Luke, because it's a difficult task to, to bring an article like that to town meeting, you need buy-in, and everything that you've said tonight, the town charter, the this, you're not looking at that, the bylaws, it's, it's bringing doubt into, if I'm, if I'm getting doubt here at the Board of Selectmen, how the heck am I gonna stand up at town meeting and sell something?
Well, I, I, my intention wasn't to create doubt, it was, it was, where are we?
They're gonna, they're gonna say, "What's going on? I thought we were doing a good job, we've been working very hard."
Well, I don't think you've heard me say, "You're not doing a good job."
They're gonna miss me.
I don't think there's any doubt in that, I think, I think what Luke is bringing up is, is an article to bring up because it's something that really needs to be done. It's up to us to take it to task to do that, and I'll volunteer that I go do it, as long as someone out there to live in, but it's not a one-man project, and we hopefully may be able to get somebody else from the town to step in and hop on a committee with us, but, you know, people out there today have so many things that they do on their own, they don't wanna get involved in town government stuff, it's a, it's a non, really a non-paying job, and, you know, spending a lot of time and effort trying to make something right to get shut down at town meeting, so it's, it is tough, and it's, I can feel for a lot of people out there, I'd like to help if they don't wanna be, take this home and get involved.
Well, one of my, one of the members of town government study committee, Phil's so committed to that committee, that he had to make a life choice, because he just had an addiction to his family, he had to choose between the advisory committee and the town government study committee, and he chose the town government study committee to sacrifice his time away from his family.
That's good. So maybe when he gets through with this, or town manager, he can get us to look at the bylaws.
Yeah, it's all things in, and it's a due course, though. Right now, we just have too much, too much going on.
I just had one question to ask you, I mean, I'm talking about this, this stuff here, whatever, you're gonna check into the County Planning Council, I guess it was, about the lights up in the center, see if you can get them put back the way they're supposed to be? Do you have an opportunity to do that?
Me?
Yeah.
No, I don't have contact with each, with them. I, I don't remember that, though, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I don't remember that conversation, 'cause I would, I would be involved, though.
Yeah, I have nothing to do with it.
The last meeting, well, you were talking about a lot of the laws and traffic rules and, and you had some conversation with, with the County Planning Council, and it would really be a great Christmas present for everybody in town that lived, that those lights on, like he said, come in the front of the center, be changed back to the way that they originally were, because there's a long, long wait for it to hit, and they changed and put the yellow lights on flash, and now they don't have to have those lights as long as they are, because they're way beyond the limit of the, I mean, if you go up to Route 53 and 14, the lights are not that long there, so, I don't know why they're that way in front of the center, other than they originally changed them because of the other two lights that were there, and now that they're on flash, the traffic is moving quicker, so let's make it quicker for the people on Madison Street that are coming in the front of the center also, to not get backed up all the way down beyond the shop and, so, if either one of them, either they have it, Luke can talk to them. Yeah, do you, do you know who changed that to flashing originally?
You mean on the L11?
Yes.
Why they went to flashing?
No, no, I know why, because we've all been bitching about it for so long, but you know who it is that changed it.
I thought we had the key.
We do have the key, somebody has to change it.
Actually...
And it was under a recommendation by old County Planning Council, I understand.
They went to flashing, it was an panic call. No, really, what happened is that there was a storm, and it hit the box, hit the control panel, okay, and it went to automatically to flashing, so that it could be repaired, and it actually fixed itself and went back to the street with yellow and green, and everybody complained about that, so we went back, because we had the key to it, and put it back on flashing, and everybody loves it. Now, you're talking about the lights going eastbound on Madison Street, trying to make that left or right on Route 36th. That's, that's the signal.
Because that was changed when they put the other lights in. That has never been like that, well, I do, because they travel every day, and so do a lot of other people that come out of town, the people that are on Route 14 trying to get through the center of town.
So I think Dan, you know, will contact those people, and see if the traffic, and then we'll come there.
I talked to him a lot.
It was a recommendation?
See, originally, we tried to get the DPW involved in it, and then they were gonna do it, but then they decided not to do it, and we tried to get the police chief involved in it, and he would hire somebody to take care of the lights on the left in town, and then found out they had to be an electrician with it, so then it went back and forth, and then finally, originally, the planning board turned it over to the town, so it's a town responsible for it. So then I contacted Halifax, which they take care of their own lights at, so it's just learning which switch and box to throw, it's not a big deal, it's all you need, is somebody to show you which switch that you have to throw.
I think what you want is you want the red, the red light...
To go back the way it was.
Well, you want it less than that, let's say right now it's on midnight, which seems like an hour or something.
Or, or the green light, Luke, is that what it is? Is the green light still on?
No, just, just to put it back the way it originally was, because originally it was, I don't know how many seconds it was now, I've got it written down, probably five, six years, but it's, it needs to go back the way that it was, and go regular traffic light, because the others are on flashing. When the other ones were changing, then that was longer so that the traffic could come through the center earlier in the morning and late at night. When you go up there and sit there, the traffic light is on evening now, or at night, you can sit there and look down either way on Center Street, all the way down as far as you could possibly see, and the car will be down there and passing through the center before that light turns green, and it's really ridiculous. Merry Christmas, have somebody change it.
What's supposed to happen, though, is, is a sensor in the ground, when, when you pull up...
And that sensor doesn't work either.
But that's, that's probably the big issue there.
No, it isn't, it's the timing of the light. Believe me, I've looked into this for a long time now, and it's the timing of the light, that's another problem, the sensor is another problem, but the timing of the light has been changed, and it's changed for early morning and late at night traffic, so it opens it wide open so that the people can go the way through the center. That needs to be changed back to the regular traffic light, that any other traffic light that you pull up to, you pull up to, and you wait a minute or something, the thing turns green and goes through, anybody that travels our road will tell them that it's in a bad situation, it's way too long, the traffic backs all the way up to the second exit, and then it's stopped and shot, it's ridiculous, it's crazy.
Might get that sensor that's broken, because the sensor changes the time, there's a loop on the right of the street, and it senses...
There's two ways it does it, yeah, there's one way that the sensor hits it, and the other way is that it's on a timer, they have a clock that's inside their big car, and that is set at certain times for certain lights, and how long the light stays green, or how long the light stays red, or, it's, it's that mechanism that's in there that changes that during a certain time period, so maybe it's from five to eight, or five to nine, or whatever, during the day, that's what needs to be changed. The engineers won't do a little traffic study, so nobody will up there and change it without having a traffic study. The traffic studies have a lot of money, they're probably seventy thousand dollars just to change this light, so Halifax takes it upon themselves to do their own, so, we'll see by weekend, if it's under the Board of Selectmen, then we have the right to do it, and we just need to find somebody that knows those switches to tell us where to put it and look around that.
I'd say we'd be, Mr. Chairman, I was hoping to go back to the discussion I had before about the comprehensive review of bylaws and some of the committee's overall problems with that, and committees. Something that came in my mind, you have a great untapped potential workforce, and high school students that have to do fifty or so, maybe to volunteer on this for the town. We actually remember the school committee sitting in, I was hoping you should comment on this, and whether or not high school students would wanna volunteer for the town.
I am not a member of the committee, but...
She's a superwoman, Ted.
I thought she was on it, too, I didn't have.
No, no, I don't get to vote, I just get to sit with you. I'm sure you have some students that are very interested in government, we have an AP Government class at the high school, I don't know if there's age requirements on your committees, but definitely feelers of REB, that kids are generally seniors and raised from A to Z from RE2, and registered to the homes. It's a small window that they're available, of course, when they go to college, but I'm sure they'd be very happy to help out.
Mr. Chairman, if Matthew's willing to, to send himself over to the committee, I would volunteer if he wanted, and we could at least work with the students to codify the miscellaneous laws and things like that, and get a draft set up of what the, the new book would look like if we will, and, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's arduous and it's boring a lot of cases, but it's something that needs to be done, and, well, if there's some interest in the repairs that there is, you know, I've done them in one other town in the past, so, I think if we get something started, I would expect it to be done within six months, but...
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I guess there'd be no one to help those of us, I reckon, from the Canada Fairness School, but I would hope that we can. All right, well, if you're, if you're free, then you can let them, you know, instead of getting hold of some people down in high school that's there.
I'll make that a follow motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Who?
I am.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I just had two other quick things on this DOL report and the town administrator's latest report on it. We, we haven't had a wage and personnel board in several years, and the town administrator has taken on some jobs that the wage and personnel board's job description would give that job to them, so we don't have them, and the way we're trying to get people to fill in other committees, we're probably not gonna have a wage and personnel board for some time. I'm not aware of any significant problems we've had, but there is a, there is a write-up about what they do, and so I think we're just, I guess that's just the comment that I would make.
So the wage and personnel board is, if the town did go to a town manager, all those tasks and duties would be with the town manager?
Excellent, that'd be great. The last quick thing, Ed, it was just a question, number thirty-one is require salaried employees to file time sheets, and your update is the town administrator will draft a template timesheet for salaried employees. My question is, does that include the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
About the town administration, what?
I have nothing tonight, nothing.
Anything to ask the selectmen? There is none of any new business. There is none, is there anything that you would like to say tonight?
Can I have the flag?
Of course, please come up to the microphone. That falls under new business.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Falls under new business, so, some of you may or may not know, an employee in the school department passed away last night, she was an active employee, so our policy allows us to lower our flags in the buildings to half staff, I'm here to ask if you guys would like to lower the flags on the town buildings to half staff also, if you're a very religious Saturday.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, do I do that?
It just needs the Board of Selectmen's support under the, the, the flag policy.
I would move that we put the flags in town hall and get them properly at half staff in honor of Flynn and Mupham, that they be held at half past until Saturday afternoon.
Second.
Any questions to comment?
You can take care of that for a second.
We have some upcoming issues, annual town meeting warrant open on January twenty-second, February fifth, open the special within the annual town meeting warrant, February fifth, Jack Kokio, Social Community Action Council request for funding, February ninth, the warrant's closed, February twenty-third, signing of town meeting warrants, May eighth, annual town meeting, May twelve, annual town election. Is there any need for executive session tonight?
Yes, sir, very brief. Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board go into executive session for Rule Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Pembroke Criminal Fire Fighters Association, Local Two Three Five One of the IAFF Union's grievance.
And the chair does so declare. My vote, of course.
Yes.
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 Yeah, and yes. So that will conclude tonight's meeting, is there any reason to come back into the town executive sessions for our votes? Really, okay. That will conclude tonight's meeting, December eighteenth, next meeting will be on...